I call this meeting to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start the meeting off slightly different using under ceremonies. I'd like to invite our Silver City poet laureate, Elise Stewart, to start us off with a poem.
This is a poem about New Mexico. When I first came here, I climbed up a mountain not knowing what it entailed. Wild mountain peak. Arriving on the peak of the mountain, my feet touching earth, arms reaching up toward the pale yellow glow of the sunset, the moon already rising round and full. The sky, the earth, and the eye connect, a singular triangle on this high peak. Suddenly, the curtains pull down, the pale gold gone, darkness. Alone on top of the mountain, I can't see, unsure of the way down. I've only come here a day ago, stumbled on the unfamiliar ground, hear the sound of water, a creek. I follow it, hoping it will leave me out. Lights of small houses appear, knocking on a door. We speak two separate languages, yet we understand each other. Estas perdido? Yes. Vamos a ayudarle. I say gracias, meaning it. From the heights of being in beauty of earth, moon, sun, cut down to the fear of being alone and lost, New Mexico reveals her heart, mirroring mine, brings me home in her own way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is public input. I would like to remind everybody, you have five minutes. I'll keep track of that. If you just take a quick look up while you're speaking, I'll try to give you a one-minute warning. I'd also like to just express how important it is to have public input and how much we really do listen to it. I know in many cases, people think that we have a glazed look in our eyes, but that glazed look is really a lot of stress and strain, fighting the empathy and desire to inappropriately engage in public debate and discussion on something that was not properly noticed and possibly leading into something that could get us in trouble with state law. So by all means, we always encourage everybody to give public input, and we apologize because of certain state laws and statutes that we don't engage in debate and discussion, but we look forward to hearing everybody's input. First on the list is Louise Hummingbird in regards to smart meter proposals.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'm here because...
Is the red light on?
No. Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'm here because I'm greatly concerned about the initiative to install smart meters on our residences in Silver City. I have many concerns about the smart meters because they are not proven to be safe, but one big concern is, I don't understand how something like this can move forward without having a public hearing first. I think it's very important that we have a public hearing on this issue, and I'm asking for one, for you to move on that right now. My concerns are that the WHO classifies radio frequency as a 2B carcinogen, same as DDT and lead. Military studies have shown that smart meters cause increased risk cancer risk, nervous system damage, DNA damage, reproductive health damage. Also, people who have had smart meters installed on their residences have complained of sleep problems, headaches, nausea, anxiety, heart palpitations, tinnitus, they are pain, concentration and memory problems, dizziness, immune and nervous system and hormonal system impacts. And you're proposing to just install water meters, water smart meters right now, but in the future, the other utilities will want to install theirs, so there'll be a combined effect. And also, these smart meters are installed in networks, microcaved networks of 500-plus homes, and that creates a situation where depending on where your home is placed in that network, you could be at greater risk than some other people on the network. Also, it increases risk from people being without their utilities due to cyber security threat, which is the new form of warfare in the world right now. So it just doesn't make sense to make us more vulnerable to that than we already are. Also, there are privacy issues. Data is being provided to government and third parties. The public utilities in California admitted that, that that's already happening. You're also opening yourself up to lawsuits. Usually, the way California goes is the way the rest of the country goes. California Public Utilities Commission has passed an opt-out proposal, which allows residents who have had smart meters forced on them, they're able to now request that they be removed. So what a waste of time and money to install something that's ultimately going to be removed, because there will be lawsuits. And also, on health issue, the radiation from these things is two times worse than that from cell phones. And I'm someone who's, I have a really smart body because I take care of it, and it lets me know when something's not right. I can't even hold a cellphone up to my head. I'm really concerned about having my home, which is a sanctuary where I go to get away from all the things that I know are harmful to me, and to have something like this forced on my sanctuary. And not only that, if somehow I can opt out, then it's going to be on a neighbor's building, and we're just all affected. Some people are more sensitive to this than the others. Children, pregnant women, people with medical conditions and that are wearing medical devices like pacemakers. Also, the environment is affected by these unnatural frequencies. I've heard that bees can die according to having these frequencies pulse at them. The earth has a natural cycle of 60 hertz, which is very healing, and we're introducing all kinds of unnatural man-made frequencies into our environment, and it's blocking these natural healing frequencies from us and disrupting our nervous systems. So overall, it just doesn't seem like a good idea, and these haven't been proven safe, and I don't think we should be used as guinea pigs. And I've noticed time and time again that in Europe, everything that gets banned there, we end up doing. They're like, they seem much more advanced in researching these things, and they want to protect their citizens, and that we end up doing what they've banned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alicia Drew, also in regards to the health exposure to RF radiation.
Hello, I'm Alicia Drew. Thanks for your time. I just wanted to correct, because you guys get thousands of emails, and I don't think they got, I'm allergic to cell phones, so please don't point it at me. There was an email sent by Alex Brown to me, or it was forwarded from the engineer back in August about how these meters work, the AMR water meters. And they do pulse every five seconds for three milliseconds at a time, 17,280 times per 24-hour period with a range of up to half a mile. I had a transient ischemic attack from exposure to these pulses from smart meters in 2011, and I moved to New Mexico specifically to get away from this technology. It's the only way I can be healthy. And like Louise, I would like a public hearing about this issue. I wonder if the town council might consider using a model that services a wake-up system, where the meter only emits radio frequency radiation once a month for a split second when the reader drives by and pings it. There are 10 or 20 people in town already intolerant to low-intensity radio frequency radiation in the megahertz range. We must be accommodated by leaving analog meters within a block or two minimal radius of our residences. I do not, I do understand that your researchers and scientists, that no one here is a medical doctor, nor have you listened to those of us who have been electromagnetically injured by this same technology, or some people by the gigahertz range with wireless routers. Many of us are intolerant to specific frequencies. For me, it's the lower frequency, the megahertz range, especially the 900 to 1500 megahertz range like cell phones and smart meters. You don't need new information. You should be looking at true information. Very low-intensity electromagnetic radiation triggers many different types of illnesses, increasingly in never-before-seen numbers with installation of radio-reed water meters. It's not the intensity, it's the pulsing. Thousands of double-handed studies have confirmed that the damaging health effects from such exposures observable in humans, animals, and plant life. The responsible use of technology must accommodate electromagnetically sensitive people and must not involve continuous emissions of radio frequency radiation. Given a choice between one pulse per month versus 17,280 per 24-hour period, and given the cost every time this technology wins a tenth of the population statistically in the ER, I demand a wake-up system rather than this bubble-up system that emits all the time. If this bubble-up system with the AMR water meters is installed, there's no safe place for people like me to go. There's already a water smart meter or near the HMS building, and I have a cavity and I can't get it filled, because I can't go there. I can't go see my PCP, I can't see my, the family support workers, my caseworker, dentist. And I really love this town, and I rely heavily on the services that I'm so blessed to receive here that have helped me so much over the last four years. There's no safe, once smart meters are installed that emit all the time, there's no safe place for people to go who have a genetic inability to process this toxin, which is a Class 2B carcinogen, according to the World Health Organization. Statistically, 50 to 100 people in this town will get immediately very sick if these are installed, and 50% of the population will end up on the electromagnetic sensitivity spectrum within the next two years because of continuous exposure to these pulses of radio frequency radiation that confuse the immune system. Thank you very much for listening.
Next is Beverly Fox, also in regards to smart meter proposal.
I think that what's been said already is sufficient, and I just think that if people become aware and do their own research, they will be probably surprised. And I think conscience, and if you love your family, it has a lot to do with helping the situation. And I guess what they said was remarkable in saying what it is, kind of addressing. So I'll leave it at that, and thank you.
Thank you. And we also have Jean Fox in regards to smart meter proposal. Okay. Moving on to council comments, I will start off. Like I said, we do absolutely appreciate public input. In many cases, hardly anything ever happens. The history of our ordinances, our resolutions, our proclamations in so many ways is stemmed from public input and the public process. It is what, and in many, many ways, it creates a tremendous amount of financial and human resources being spent at the staff level as they listen to public input and try to address concerns and do research and work for, in furthering what needs to get done for the community. It also adds to the workload of the council, who tries to, in many cases, champion certain things and start to do the research and work and task staff in certain directions. So public input is greatly appreciated and very, very necessary. That being said, I'd like to talk about some past public input. There was a lot of information given to us about the PNM San Juan case, and in many cases, they wanted to see a resolution brought forward and addressed by the town. And what I will do in this, in the council comments, is talk about why I did not sponsor a resolution. I can't speak for the rest of the council. I could only speculate that they chose to go in a similar direction based on similar reasonings. But for me, you know, resolutions are used to define policy and to legislate for the health, safety, and welfare of the community. They are based on informed positions of individual councillors, based on underlying evidence or personal knowledge. And in many cases, once we set a resolution, it's very profound, it's a, it becomes policy, a law. It binds and guides staff to move in a certain direction, which could be, have extreme financial and human resource implications. And in this case, one of the areas we could have moved in was being an intervenor, in which case we would have had to hire a lot of experts and exhausted a huge body of resources, potentially put staff in a position of having to juggle budget, squeeze the library, squeeze the museum, not properly staff or continue to maybe even create hiring freezes in certain departments like the police or fire in order to pay for such expertise. So I, as the chief executive officer, chose not to sponsor anything that would create the town, put the town in the position of being an intervenor in this case, you know, and we didn't do anything other than to express the town's encouragement that the PRC conduct a fair and transparent proceeding, which they are already obligated to do. The, you know, we also looked at the fact that there were a number of intervenors in this case, many of them that were like-minded or at least fulfilling the desires of what our constituents were wanting us to do. So they already had deep pockets, and they were already doing the research and presenting their case to ensure that both sides were getting a, had, were giving their due to the You know, another direction we could have gone with a resolution is to simply, you know, show support. We could have been like, supporting a certain side in a quasi-judicial scenario, which is what the PRC does. They're a hearing board, they're in a judicial proceeding. So had we done that, what we would be basically doing is, we'd be undermining that, the idea of having a fair and transparent proceeding, because what we would be doing is creating a ex parte communications to a board that we're trying to have a fair hearing for. And beyond that, what we're also doing is, we're trying to pervert a judicial hearing with political weight. If that was actually to work, think about what would happen if we were opposed or at odds with larger municipalities like Albuquerque or Las Cruces, who have deeper pockets and more population, or if we were at odds with the state. And being at odds, we were relying on a fair hearing to ensure that our interests were served, well, that wouldn't, that wouldn't work real well if the hearing board actually looked at people throwing their political weight around. Beyond that, that ex parte communication is, you know, we're trying to interfere with the judicial proceeding. The decision, the PRC, those hearing board members, they are bound by law to ignore such interference and make a ruling based on the official record before it. So what we were looking at, and what we were actually considering, well, what I was considering, potentially even sponsoring, is in no way appropriate for this council to do, not even to the point of creating a show and having it voted down. Just by doing that in and of itself, just bringing it to a vote in that format, we are actually illustrating to the PRC, to the Attorney General, that they, that there is already, we are already fearing that they may not be doing their job, that they may not be having a fair and transparent hearing, that the Attorney General is considering allowing false statements or fraudulent statements, or even being a party to it. Even if we voted it down, we're already illustrating to our government that we don't trust their process. And I, as a chief executive officer of this community, could not do that to those, to that hearing board, to our Attorney General. And it's very possible that the reason why none of the other councillors were willing to support it is, for one or more of those reasons, or even other reasons, chose not to sponsor it. So I do, I do want to make that clear and let people know that even though we didn't engage in public debate and discussion at that time, I did want to share my thoughts during council comments here. On another note, you will see that later in the agenda, that we're already looking at the election coming up in next, next March. And I would, after a lot of thought and a lot of consideration, and basing a decision to what I believe is right for my family and for my business, I will not seek reelection in this upcoming election. So anybody looking to become mayor is, this is the time that you need to start looking at it, considering it, and trying to move forward with your platforms. And with that, I'll pass it on to Councilor Kano.
I just want to start with, tomorrow is Veterans Day, so I would just like to thank all the veterans of the community for what they've done for us, especially my colleague, Councilman Ray. Thank you for your service. I actually want to share something that's kind of fun. Sometimes, being a town councillor gives you opportunities to do stuff that's pretty cool. And this last Sunday, I attended an event that was sponsored by Senator Jacob Fandelaria, who represents District 26, which is in Albuquerque. He is the youngest legislator in New Mexico, and he developed something called the Futuro Award, which is for young New Mexicans between the ages of 16 and 30 who are very involved in the democratic, well, actually, the political process in general, and who are active voices in the community. I nominated a young man to receive that award, and he did receive it. His name is Miguel Nerveis Jr. He is a senior at Western Mexican University. He's a senator, he has a job on campus, and he is going to attend law school when he's done with his schooling, his undergrad schooling. He received the award because he is very active on the campus community. In the campus community, he spends a lot of time making sure that people his age are educated voters, not just voters, but educated voters. He's actually quite unique in the fact that he actually cannot vote, because he's not a US citizen at this time, but he is going through the citizenship process and will hopefully be one. But it was just a real honor to go to Albuquerque and to have someone from Silver City, you know, a little town four and a half hours away, that most of the people in the room kind of hadn't even really thought about being one of our future leaders. So congratulations to Miguel Nerveis Jr. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say that Thanksgiving coming up, so you guys have a very happy Thanksgiving. Also, I did get a report from Chief Reynolds, and he did tell me that it would be not very feasible to get two police officers in a, in a car, simply because we don't have the resources, the town doesn't have the money to do that. And it's okay, though, but at least we're trying. And I know Mr. Brown and the chief, I know they were looking at it very, very carefully. So at this time and point, it will have to be done. Also, I am going to try and see if I can bring up the cellphone ban next year, after the first of the year. And the reason I want to do this is because somewhere along the line, we have the opportunity, we're going to have the opportunity to ban them. And if we don't do it, somewhere along the line, we're going to find somebody that will sue the city if something happens. And I don't think that we want to, we want to have that on our shoulders. So I would like to see if the public can give us some feedback on that. Thank you, and I bless America.
Councilor Emma Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say, you go, population, for voting for the CD Trail, because we got the, we, the CD Trail folks, got some money that will be used throughout the entire trail system, not just here, but I thought that was great. I voted every day. I also want to say, bless the town for striping the streets. Alabama Street is beautifully striped, and I was really thrilled to see that. I want to speak a little bit, thank you, Mayor, for giving us a segue to talk about how council folks choose or choose, choose to support a resolution, choose to take a particular course of action or not. And I just want to say to everyone who is here, my colleagues, the populace, people who are watching on Katz TV, we value public input, but sometimes, public input gives erroneous information. Sometimes people, well, I think with good hearts, speak things that are not true. And one of the things that was disturbing to me about the push of people who wanted us to support a resolution, me to support a resolution, lobbying the PRC, was that they had not clearly done their homework fully. They made statements like, "Other towns have done this," which was not exactly true. They made statements like, "No one is bringing up these issues," that was not true. There were lots of interveners who were bringing up the issues. And I went back and read the district attorney's brief advising the PRC on their protocols, and many of the issues that were brought up by the public, folks pushing us to run this resolution, actually have been discussed in the brief. And so I just felt like it was information taken out of context, not full, not really placed correctly within the whole spectrum of what the PRC does. And so I would not carry such a resolution. And with that kind of message to people, I guess I'll say that I am going to run again. So if you didn't like that, I didn't do the resolution. So if you didn't like that, I didn't do the resolution.
Councilor Bedison.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to thank our veterans for their service, including Councilor Ray and all the other veterans in the room. And I thank you, Mayor, for eloquently explaining how council decides what legislation to move forward on, and I think that you expressed my concerns very clearly and very well, so there's no need to reiterate that. So once again, I appreciate you doing that. Thank you very much. And I also would like to congratulate the folks for the Continental Divide Trail. I do thank everybody who voted, I voted every day as well, and I think that that's what made sure that our trail, between Chama and Silver City, I think it's mostly where that money's going to be spent. The $25,000 will go a long way towards updating the trail and doing things. So I think Silver City really came out to vote for that and surround communities, so thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Very quickly, absolutely, I, I almost feel embarrassed that I did not thank Councilor Ray for his service and, and all the veterans and, and hope everybody has a wonderful day tomorrow, and thanks, thanks to every veteran. I would also ask that town staff, whether it's Alex Brown or James Marshall, speak a little bit, you know, kind of related to this PNM cases and resolutions. Talk a little bit about the, the rate case, if, if we know anything, what we know, and we'll do that in staff reports. If, if you have information, I'd like that to be added in staff reports. Does anybody need round two? Councilor Kano.
Well, I feel like I'm not the only one that didn't make an announcement, since my, my seat is also up, and I too will be seeking reelection for District 4.
Anybody else?
No, sir.
Any changes to the agenda? Approval of minutes?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Amos Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town of Silver City from October 27, 2015.
Councilor Bedison.
Mr. Mayor, a second and motion as stated.
We have a motion a second for approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town of Silver City for October 27, 2015. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion a second as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Staff reports. Mr. Marshall?
In response to your request, this is a staff opinion, a staff report regarding the upcoming PRC hearings on the rate case. And out of my norm, I did type up and type this up so I don't miss any, any points. The Public Regulation Commission is a regulatory agency charged with oversight of several regulated industries, including insurance, transportation, telecommunications, and public utilities. In addition to investigatory and enforcement activities, its duties include examining applications by those regulated industries seeking rate increases or modifications of rate structures. In that role, the PRC acts as a quasi judicial body with a goal of balancing the interest of the applicant with the interest of the public. The PRC is not a consumer protection agency, but rather it operates under the assumption that a private business is entitled to a profitable return on its investment while at the same time assuming that higher rates impact the financial well-being of the customers, who are usually captive to the applicant's business. Evidence of reasonableness includes comparing estimated future income to estimated future expenses, then computing a rate structure that ensures enough income to cover those expenses along with a profit component. The PRC provides the venue for making a record that best reflects the true anticipated income and expenses, and also incorporates public policies such as conservation, encouragement of diversification of energy production, consideration of the constraints upon lower-income customers, the need to attract business, and determining the critical needs of the state. There are many ways for the applicant to manipulate numbers to suit its self-interest. Therefore, there is a great need for the PRC to have the necessary staff and expertise to examine those numbers. The information gained through hearing is supplemented by opponents to the application. Their information is gained from cross-examining the applicant and employing their own experts to challenge assumptions made by the applicant. Also, there is the State Attorney General's Office, which has a small department that is charged with consumer protection. Both the PRC and the Attorney General's Office are charged by law with securing due process and a transparent process open to the public. The PNM rate case application process begins with an application which is reviewed by PRC staff. It may be accepted as complete or rejected for incompleteness or a number of other reasons. The application is published and assigned to a hearing officer who will permit the making of a record and will eventually make a recommendation. Any person or entity may seek to intervene in the process, wanting to challenge the applicant's numbers and testimony, the policies that are being proposed, and offering their own expert testimony. Then there's a public comment portion of the record that affords other interested persons who are not parties to the case to express their opinion. Municipal resolutions that reiterate the pre-existing obligation of the PRC and staff, the Attorney General, and hearing officer to conduct a fair and open transparent process are redundant and pointless. These resolutions are viewed political and have little weight in the final determination, which must be based on numbers and evidential findings. I do not recommend that the Town of Silver City be a part of this case. First and most important is that the town does not have the financial resources to provide expert witnesses and attorneys, who must be employed for the duration of the proceedings and who must be paid for their examining the evidence of others and expressing their own opinion. That dollar cost will be in the tens of thousands, if not significantly more, per expert or attorney. The town is fortunate, however, that there will be many entities that do have the resources to champion those issues that are important to the town. There will be representatives of conservation societies, clean energy advocates, solar and wind industries, municipal water associations, anti-coal and anti-nuclear groups, advocates for the poor municipalities, et cetera. Although self-interest is the driving force behind each of these parties, the presence of this very group will ensure that the most important issues will be exhaustively examined. It is my recommendation that the town request be put on the mailing list of the docket to keep itself apprised of the developments in the case. Further, I suggest using the town's political influence to ensure that the PRC and Attorney General's Office have the necessary resources to guarantee an open, transparent, and fair process in determining the fair rates that PNM can impose on its customers. Further, it is recommended that the town continue to follow a course of conservation and innovative approach toward gaining a greater degree of energy independence. With that, I stand for question.
Are there any questions for Mr. Marshall? Councilor Amos Smith?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. So you're speaking specifically about this rate case, not the San Juan Generating Plant case, which is under discussion, but the upcoming rate case, which I understand hearings will begin in perhaps March.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff reports? Mr. Brown?
Mayor and Council, I just want to let you know today, we received the grant agreements for both of our colonias projects, for the Vista de Plata and the Great Chamber at the wastewater treatment plant. And we also received both of our legislative allocation agreements. So they all require resolutions, so we will be, be bringing them at our next regular meeting in December, because we're not under any time constraints since they took a while and the construction time of the year really isn't during the middle of winter. So we're going to hold off on that. And I just wanted to say I'm sorry that the mayor's not running. That power holds such power, he just barely asked me to stripe the streets today, and it was done. I mean...
I'll take credit for that one. Any other reports? From the police department? I knew I could coax them into it.
Mayor and Council, good evening. I just wanted to give a small report from the chief. He asked me to talk about the gang activity that we've had in Silver City. So for the past two years, we haven't had any gang activity or anything reported dealing with any gangs. He also mailed with department heads from the Tri-City, from their police departments and also from the sheriff to see if they've had any gang issues. At this time, they haven't reported anything either. So that's about the only thing I have.
Is there any questions? Councilor Ray?
Thank you. I know, we appreciate that very much. Tell the chief, thank you. And the public deserves that. Again, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Next item on the agenda, under unfinished business, approval disapproval of ordinance number 1243 and ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 2, Economic Development Plan, Section 16-47, 16-67, and 16-69 of the Town of Silver City Code of Ordinances. Councilor Amos Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I introduce this, I talk about how economic development, especially local economic development, is, is all of our concern. It's a way for us all to prosper. And I like to think of that economic development as a plumbing system. You want to have big money pipes coming in, you want to have little pipes with very little money running out, and you want to have a big rotor, a multiplier, swirling the money in the middle. And that's what a locally owned, locally developed, locally invested project will do. And that's what the Local Economic Development Act was really, I believe as it reads now, intended to do. One of the things that I think has been a sea change in New Mexico and the state is that, to some degree perhaps, there's been a turning away from the idea of trying to bring in big corporations and rather to develop more local entities. And I like that very much. What this amendment, proposed amendment, does to our, to our current ordinance is, one, it really makes us able to receive funding from the state economic development administration to be directed towards local projects. The amendments really, as I said before, are two fairly large ones and a small one. The small one says that our local incentives committee doesn't have to review projects where the money isn't generated, where we're not, as taxpayers ourselves, locally giving the money, but rather it won't have to review if money comes from the state or other entities. Anyone who has served on the incentives committee did this. Good, because it's a long drawn-out process, as it rightly should be, because what those, those meetings do is they look at, is it really a sound business proposal? The amendment also says that what has been lacking for some time in New Mexico economic development funding now will be put into place, and that is that there will be agreements put into place that the entity receiving the money, which is usually business, will say, "This is what our business plan projects. We are going to be doing this kind of capital infrastructure that's going to really add to our downtown. We propose that, or we anticipate, based on our business model, that in the next few years, we're going to be creating these many full-time, well-paying jobs, and that's our commitment, that's our stake in the ground." And then the state will say, "Okay, we'll give you money, but if you don't do it, you're going to have to give back what you didn't fulfill on your promise." So those are clawback agreements, and that's what this, this will put into our current ordinance. So it will make us able, or impel us, to really make sure to work in a collaborative way with the entities seeking the money, to say, "You better have a good business plan, and we really do all want to be, enjoy the benefits of your business expanding together." Because any local business that does better means we all do better. Local business means we all do better. So that's really what this is all about.
Thank you. Did staff have anything to add to that?
I think you've covered it very well, Councilor.
Is there any questions for Councilor Amos Smith? I'd like to just mention, I've, I did an amendment for, on our LIDA, on our Economic Development Plan, probably a couple of years ago. And what this, what this is really stemming from is, is helping fix some of the anti-donation criteria that we have by state statute, meaning that the town just can't give to private individuals, private businesses for, for their benefit. And that's, and it's a really good body of lie. The intent of the anti-donation lie is, is very, very sound. But what it did is, a community that is trying to grow its economy and improve its, its resources and its infrastructure and the number of jobs and the vibrancy of its community has its hands tied in, in helping facilitate that. So what LIDA, when, when LIDA first came out, the Local Economic Development Act at the state level, is it helped to undo a little bit of that. And as the councillor mentioned, it was really kind of geared originally towards those big municipalities, mainly Albuquerque, so that they could help attract major corporations. But what it did see, and as, as people started looking at this act a little bit more fully, they, they realized that this is valuable for smaller communities as well, even at smaller levels, and this is a, a great example of what, what we've seen. And, and not that we have buckets of money to give to private business for profit, but the state does have some funds that, that we can actually go and grab as long as we meet their, that state statute. So what we've been doing is, as the state has amended their LIDA Act, we usually try to come in and have ours as comparable as possible so that we can fully qualify. And as a, as a, as a mayor who really wants to look at the economic welfare of its community, this, I look at this as a tool in a toolbox that's, that's extremely valuable, and I definitely support any good, solid tools in our toolbox. So, so hopefully the council will follow suit and pass this ordinance. With that, I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Amos Smith?
Before I make the motion, I want to say that the state actually has a large bucket of money. $50 million was in that fund this year. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1243 and ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 2, Economic Development Plan, Sections 16-47, 16-67, and 16-69 of the Town of Silver City Code of Ordinances.
Councilor Bedison.
Mr. Mayor, a second and motion as stated.
We have a motion a second for approval of ordinance number 1243 and ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 2, Economic Development Plan, Sections 16-47, 16-67, and 16-69 of the Town of Silver City Code of Ordinances. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Bedison.
Thank you, Mayor. As I had said at the meeting where this ordinance was proposed, I think this is one of ordinance that really sort of refines our current LIDA that we have for the town and just enables us to ensure that the qualified entity is contributing and utilizing the money as intended that was not given to them. So I thank Councilor Amos Smith for sponsoring this, and I fully support this ordinance.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion second as read into the record. Roll call.
Councilor Bedison?
Aye.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Kano?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Is everybody okay? Ready to go? Councilor Bedison? Council Badson?
I look for a short recess. Mr. Mayor, a second?
We have a motion, a second, for a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess. Call this meeting back together. Next item on the agenda, under new business, approval disapproval of bid number 15 slash 16 dash 2 janitorial services. Mr. Brown?
Ma'am, Council, we received two bids for the cleaning service, uh, for bid, uh, number 15 slash 16 dash 2 janitorial services, uh, one from Complete Care Cleaning Services in the amount of sixty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars per year, the other from Mom's Cleaning Habits, uh, for a hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and four cents. Uh, even though Mom's Cleaning Services were from Silver City, uh, they were above the five percent, uh, local preference, so it's staff's recommendation to award the bid to Complete Care Cleaning Services of Albuquerque, New Mexico for seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars a year.
Council Amos Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a, a brief question. What all buildings are going to be cleaned by the cleaning services? Are they all the municipal buildings and the...
Yes, they're all the municipal buildings, uh, the bathroom at the hub, the public bathroom. Uh, so it'd be the annex, city hall, municipal court, um, the Public Works Building.
Museum?
No, the museum and library have, we have, uh, one personnel, one person still that is, uh, we phased out, uh, janitors as they retired. And so, um, this cleaning service has actually replaced, uh, two, two full-time janitors, physicians, or the police department and the fire department.
Yeah, so they clean that building?
Yes, the public safety.
Another brief question. Well, given all of that, cleaning, um, even though this place is headquartered in Albuquerque, they're likely to have people, local, working on it?
Oh, yes, it's, it's local people that work here.
Okay.
They, they employ local people that, that do all the work. Actually, people that, that I know from the mining district have been doing city hall and, and the annex. They do an excellent job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Council Ray?
Is this a yearly thing?
This is, I believe it's a four-year contract.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a big difference.
It's a big difference.
Yeah, quotes. This, have we used this cleaning service before?
This is a cleaning service we're currently using.
So, so they do under, so, so they, they clearly understand what they're, what they're doing and what they're engaged in?
Yes, and they, like I said, they do a very good job.
Okay.
I mean, they go above and beyond a lot of times. Sort of feel uncomfortable about them, about them cleaning our cups and stuff. It's, uh, I really appreciate the stuff that they do.
I'll entertain a motion. Council Badson?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve bid number 15 slash 16 dash 2 janitorial services per staff recommendation to Complete Care Cleaning Services for six thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars per month, um, which equals seventy, seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars per year.
Council Amos Smith?
Is that a motion, is stated?
We have a motion, second, is read into the record. Is there any discussion? We have a motion, second, is read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, if I could get it on the iPad, is approval disapproval of bid number 15 slash 16 dash 3 pest control services.
Our main office business is bid, uh, 15 slash 16 dash 3 for pest control services. Uh, we received two, two bids. Uh, because of the price, we necessarily didn't have to put it out to bid. It should have just been done, uh, through quotes, but because we had advertised it and did put it out to bid, we still needed to bring it to the council, uh, for approval. Uh, so, uh, we received one for, from Bug Hunters Pest Control for three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-four cents per year, and Grant County Pest Control for four thousand, five hundred and sixty per year, and they are both Grant County, um, businesses, so, uh, it's staff's recommendation to award the bid to Bug Hunters Pest Control for three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-four cents.
Is there any questions? Council Ray?
Is this also a four-year contract?
Yes.
Council Badson?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve bid number 15 slash 16 dash 3 pest control services per staff's recommendation to, um, Bug Hunter Pest Control for three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-four cents per year.
Council Amos Smith?
My second motion is stated.
We have a motion, second, is read into the record. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion, second, is read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of resolution number 2015 dash 28 for the regular municipal election to be held on March 1st, 2016. Mrs. Mackey?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'm asking for your approval of this resolution to call the election on March 1st, 2016. It will be for the offices of Mayor for a two-year term for districts 1, 2, 3, and 4, the office of One Counselor in District 2 for a two-year term, and the office of One Counselor in District 4 for a two-year term. All four districts will be consolidated, will have one polling place, as we did last year. The Voting Convenience Center, it will be at the Silver City Women's Club on Silver Heights Boulevard. Absentee voting will begin on January 26th at City Hall. Early voting on the vote tabulator machine will begin at City Hall on February 10th and last through February 26th. Persons interested in registering to vote will need to do so by February 2nd with the county clerk's office. And, uh, folks need to also check with the county clerk before February 2nd if they've had a name change or address changed. They need to get that corrected by February 2nd. The day to declare candidacy is on January 5th in my office at City Hall from 8 to 5. And the ballots will be counted on the Dominion Voting Machine, just as they were last March. Do you have any questions?
Is there any questions? Now, Council Badson?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Mac, can you tell me, um, we saved money in last year's election by using the Voting Convenience Center and using the, uh, Dominion Electronic Tabulators? Did we save a little bit overall, or was it almost even?
We did not actually save money. We had to pay, uh, the Dominion Company did the programming, so we had to pay for ballot programming through them, which we never had to do before, so that was an extra fifteen hundred dollars right there for the new company. Since then, Municipal Clerks Association has been working with Secretary of State's Office and the Dominion Voting Company to try to relieve that expense, because many municipalities simply can't afford a fifteen hundred dollar expense from the get-go just for programming. So, uh, that, some changes have been made, so we, we won't have that major expense any longer. Last year, we also went to the auto vote system, so that was an automated system, so that cost us a little bit, that cost us some money. And we had it at absentee voting and, um, at the Voting Convenience Center. Everybody loved it. The poll workers loved it. I think it was very convenient for the voters. No complaints whatsoever, and I'd like to proceed with auto vote system again to continue using that. It simplified our process. At the end of the evening on election night, the reports were generated automatically. It was, it was great. So I would like to continue that. But I wish I could say we saved money last year, but we did not. We had a lot of changes last year.
So is there an anticipation that we might save just a tad, a little bit this year if there's been some, um, discussions with Dominion and, uh, with the clerks and with the Secretary of State's Office to try to even out so that we wouldn't have to pay the, uh, such a large fee to actually program?
We've been told Dominion has contracted with our, uh, one of our vendors that handles election supplies and ballot programming. They've contracted with them, and that vendor, Automated Election Services, is their name, has assured us that the price will not be that way. I don't have a dollar amount, but, uh, that was a critical question for all the clerks around the state since last March, when I informed all of them that, "Hey, you need to adjust your budgets." It was a fifteen hundred dollar expense just for programming, so everybody was in a whirlwind because they just couldn't afford it. So we did get that changed.
And just one, one last, one, what it does do is by using the electronic system, and as you said, we don't have to worry about, um, ballot spoilage, um, and we don't have to have folks to make sure that all ballots that were not used were accounted for and that they're destroyed at the end of the evening, uh, if they were not used, et cetera. So it, it does save trees, saves a lot of time and money on ballots that were never used, because we have to order so many ballots just to make sure there's enough ballots on election day. And so now we don't have to destroy those. There's still spoiled ballots, because that's something that is in the voting process. So if they double mark, you know, two candidates, then the machine will spoil, spoil it. I mean, it'll pop out, or they have to do it again, so. But that's electronically, no, no.
Right. Exactly.
Great. Well, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion. Council Badson?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2015 dash 28 for the regular municipal election to be held on March 1st, 2016.
Council Amos Smith?
My second motion is stated.
We have a motion, a second, for approval of resolution number 2015 dash 28 for the regular municipal election to be held on March 1st, 2016. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion, a second, is read into the record. Roll call.
Council Badson?
Aye.
Council Amos Smith?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of resolution number 2015 dash 29 approving the submittal of a recertification application to the Mortgage Finance Authority for the 2015, 2016 house-by-house homeowner rehabilitation program. Mr. Brown? Mr. Marshall?
Mr. Mayor, Council, um, I think many of you are aware that many years ago, there was a study done on the housing, um, Silver City, and found to be some significant deficiencies in, in quality. Some of those, I mean, there's, there's homes with missing floors, um, no heat, um, significant electrical issues creating, um, serious concerns for the safety of those families. So the town, since 2002, has participated in the house-by-house rehab program, and we've, we've either been able to rehab or replace through this program. I don't know the number, but it's in the, in the tens, um, and, is that thirties? Thirties? So it's in the thirties. The, the program, when it started in 2002, had about, I think, three and a half million dollars committed to it statewide, and it's, it's now significantly less than a million. But Silver City still has a need and, and the part of the staying in that, in that pool and available, whether we address the issues in-house or, or through contract, is we have to have a resolution that, that approves the application and your interest and intent in continuing the service. That's what we're asking.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Council Badson?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2015 dash 29, approving the submittal of a recertification application to the Mortgage Finance Authority for the 2015, 2016 house-by-house homeowner rehabilitation program.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Ray?
I'll second that, is it?
We have a motion, a second, is read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir. No, sir.
We have a motion, a second, is read into the record. Roll call.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Amos Smith?
Aye.
Council Badson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of a special dispensers permit application for the Members' Region Arts Council Black Tie Ball to be held on December 12th, 2015 at Lawley Toyota, 2750 Highway 180, Silver City, New Mexico, from 6:00 PM to 12:30 AM. License holder, WNN Enterprises Inc., doing business as Snappy Mart Number 4. Liquor license number 0151-206 North Hudson Street, PO Box 559, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Is there anybody here to present? Kevin? Just give us a little breakdown of what we're looking at.
Sure. So the event that we're holding at Lawley is a fundraising event. We're a nonprofit, as you may know, and it helps, um, cover our indirect costs for, um, providing lots of great programming for the city and for the county and the larger region. Um, we're hoping to have 300 people, and, um, this is something that, uh, has been happening for many years. I'm new to the council, but, um, it sounds like a great event, and I'm looking forward to it and inviting all of you as well.
Any questions for Kevin? Uh, Council Connaught?
Actually, can I, yeah, you identify yourself, please? Thank you.
New executive director at Members' Region Arts Council.
Uh, Council Badson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we have a black and white copy, and it says, "All alcoholic beverages must remain within the highlighted area only." Is the highlighted area the entire space that's on the, on the map that's been provided?
I have a white and white copy as well. Um, it is, from my understanding, it is in the, um, showroom. They clear out the showroom.
Right.
And that's where it should be.
Okay, so, um, because there's a serving area in the bay, um, and I didn't know if that was the food serving area or if that's an alcoholic beverage serving area, because it just says serving area. There's also one, uh, in where they have their business folks, um, sitting where they take, um, credit cards and stuff. I didn't, I know because I bought my car there before it was on, so.
Right.
And take my car there for service. So, um, huh, and there's also an area that's enclosed with six-foot fence for smoking in portable bathrooms, so I'm presuming that that might also be included, but I think, uh, um, given that it says, "All alcoholic beverages must remain within the highlighted area only," um, I think prior to, to the state, it might be good to actually highlight the area?
Understood. I'll get them a color copy.
Um, and I know from previous Arts Council events that they are very, and with the folks that are doing the service, that they're very, uh, good about ensuring that it does stay within the highlighted area only, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve our special dispensers permit application for the Members' Region Arts Council Black Tie Ball to be held on December 12th, 2015, at Lawley Toyota, 2750 Highway 180, Silver City, New Mexico, from 6:00 PM to 12:30 AM. License holder, WNN Enterprises Inc., VBA Snappy Mart Number 4, liquor license number 0151-206 North Hudson Street, PO Box 559, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Council Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion, is stated.
We have a motion, a second, is read into the record. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion, a second, is read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of notice of intent ordinance number 1244, an ordinance adopting the Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, here and after qualifying entity, establishing... after qualifying entity establishing a brewery and distillery as an economic development project within and for the Silver City Arts and Cultural District pursuant to Section five dash ten dash two B NMSA nineteen seventy-eight Local Economic Development Act and Sections sixteen dash twenty-one A of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. Are you sponsoring this one as well?
No, but I could talk to him.
Mr. Marshall?
As you saw before with the SOCO project, you have an NOI, again, one of the requirements is that we declare that a project is an economic development qualified entity under the LEDA, and this ordinance takes care of that. The, if I back up a little bit, many of you saw that Secretary Abrela was down, he made an announcement that there was money that has been allocated and set aside for the Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery. The LEDA process runs backwards. So he made, he got a letter that he felt justified the allocation, and now we're going through the application process. To start the application process, we need the council to, one, designate that it is a qualifying entity and project. So that's where we're at with this. The, you'll notice in the partnership agreement that there is some significant changes from the last one. These are still drafts, where the NOI actually authorizes the town manager to do what's necessary to execute the entire agreement. But I think it is important, in lieu of the ordinance that just passed, that you notice that there is actually criteria for clawback in the agreement. And if they create the eight to ten jobs, there's no performance clawback required. Six to seven jobs, there'd be a ten percent. And that's what is going to be required of them to meet those standards, to be able to keep the entire amount that is built to the construction, enabling the jobs. The, we are still waiting for a security agreement. We have to have an appraisal on the property that they're, that they would like to put forward as security for this contract. And we're also waiting on the economist out of Santa Fe who is doing a very in-depth analysis of their business model and making sure that they have the capitalization and all the requirements to actually succeed. The goal is absolutely to succeed for the business and not to ever have to exercise any of the options, which, thank you to your previous vote, are now afforded to the town. And the town is actually acting as the fiscal agent for the state, and we would also be having to foreclose for the state should that situation arise. And with that, I'll stand for question.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the town gets to be the good guy and potentially the bad guy. I have a couple of questions. One is that, my understanding is that the proposed property, which would be the brewery and distillery, is right, you know, downtown, and is that in the tax incremental district? So will the property value add to our TIF?
I believe that is the southern border of the TIF.
Yeah, I thought it was, but I wasn't really sure. Second thing that I want to ask is, because this says, "within and for the Silver City Arts and Cultural District." Now, that is a geographic boundary, that's not an entity, right? So it's within the, district is identified geographically within the town.
That is correct, and we have used this, the Arts and Culture District in both the applications that we've done in the past. Because I think it's important to recognize that we are putting in these improvements as well as the requirements under LEDA in enhancing the Arts and Culture District.
Right. I think that's my other question.
Any other questions?
Just as a basic comment, yes, some of the past LEDA changes was to add cultural facilities as helping aid and qualify entities. So that is a very important point to make. I think this is important, I think this is a good project. This is the type of economic development projects that we can actually do and sustain. It's not big and glamorous, it's not bringing an entail or, you know, a big manufacturer, but it is bringing in real jobs and good economic development at a level that is practical for Silver City, and I think that's what we need to do. Also, I'd like to note that this is a notice of intent, so this is a first reading, this is making it public for public discussion. Please give us your thoughts over the next month. The final reading, I would presume, would be at the first meeting in December, especially since we don't have a second meeting in November. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm making a move in for approve of a notice of intent ordinance number twelve forty-four, an ordinance adopting a local creek brewery and distillery herein after qualifying entity establishing a brewery and distillery as an economic development project within and for the Silver City Arts and Cultural District pursuant to Section five dash ten dash two B NMSA nineteen seventy-eight Local Economic Development Act and Section sixteen dash twenty-one A of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico.
Counselor Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I look at that motion as stated.
We have a motion second is read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
We have a motion second is read into the record. Roll call.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is appointment to the municipal, or municipal, the museum board. We have an applicant that I'd like to appoint, Pauline Gomez is, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I will appoint Pauline Gomez. And, if I can get to the right one, yeah. Next item on the agenda is appointment to the Historic Design Review Committee. We have a reapplication of a longtime committee member and chair, Becky Smith, to the Historic Design Review Committee. She's given a ton of time and energy to a number of things within our community, and I'd like to reappoint her to the, to that committee. Any objections?
No.
Rebecca Smith is appointed. Counselor Amos Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn. My second motion.
We have a motion second for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.